I'm going to call the meeting to order. So the first thing is to review and approve the agenda, and I don't believe we have any changes.
I have something, an adjustment to make, and I apologize. This is slightly spacey on my behalf, but I got some last-minute round of my first round of liquor license renewals. I've got just a regular renewal from Mobile Mart. I've got a slightly different one from Sodexo Operations. That's just a name change, so they had to refile another one. And Capital Food Court, which is just the folks who run the Capital Cafeteria. They're always constantly sending me a million catering requests, and they just got recommended to just get their own local license. Life will be better for them, so I may add those.
And so this is to...
To the consent agenda, sorry.
Any objection to that change? Okay. Any other comments on the agenda? Okay, so without objection, we'll consider the agenda approved. All right, so on to general business and appearances. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council on a topic that is otherwise not on our agenda. Welcome. Oh, and if you would say your name and where you live, and try to keep your comments to about two minutes.
Okay, I got the timer going. Zach Hughes, Prospect Street, Montpelier. And my comments will be rather brief on this subject, and I'll defer my comments to later on other stuff. I would like to offer special thanks to Avon over in the community center downstairs here for her time on the homeless task force, for assisting us in the beginning. I think her work with us was very valuable, and we thank her for that. And I'd like to wish congratulations to Tony Fakos for his retirement. Sad to see you go, Chief Fakos. Thank you.
Thank you. And is your comment related to something not on our agenda?
It's about something that happened in the last council meeting
Okay.
in regard to the funding of the recommendations of the homelessness task force, which I don't see here.
So that would be a part of our budget hearing? So if you would save your comment until then?
Even though it's about comments made by a counselor in regard to said funding?
So generally speaking, if it's something that's on our agenda?
It's not really. It's kind of like just the sentiment of what was said.
That's fine. I just figured I'd check. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Say your name and where you live.
Laura Rose, Prospect Street, Montpelier. Counselor Bate expressed the desire to not have homeless people come here should we fully fund the recommendations. I believe that she said that, you know, they come from different places, and if we had, you know, the sentiment was really to me that if we had really good services, that people might come here to be helped, and that she didn't want to fund the recommendations in case that maybe people would come here, because we do have open borders here in Montpelier. So if we had really great services for the homeless population, she was afraid that they might come from other places to take advantage of that. But I feel that maybe other counselors, or maybe potential counselors, could have a different feeling about homeless population in Montpelier, and that we could really set an example by allocating funding and making a difference in people's lives. Our small financial contributions could change lives. And I'm just wondering if other people feel like Counselor Bate not wanting to help the homelessness because there's a fear that more could come.
Thank you.
Can I comment?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
Yeah.
I'm sorry if that's how you felt about what I said. I was emphasizing, I even made the motion for the $45,000. Was, I do feel we need to have a regional response, that it's not just Montpelier, and that we need a regional commitment, including the financing, the programs, and the whole networking and resolution. And I felt the regional approach was very important, even though we started our own task force. I'm hoping we don't stop there, but that we end up networking financially and resources with the region. So I apologize if somehow that's sounded like what I meant.
You were talking about our funding of the proposal here locally, so it really did sound like you didn't want to help that segment.
Okay, all I can say is it isn't my intention, and that's why I made the motion for the funding, but I also feel like we shouldn't fund it 100% that it is. That's all.
Okay, we'll talk about it later. Thank you.
Steve Whitaker, Montpelier. I'd like to just again raise the alarm about our necessity for prioritizing public works maintenance. I know our director is working hard to get staffed up and rearrange and redesign that department, but when I repeatedly have to deal with folks and help folks walk along a section of sidewalk that's too covered with ice, and I'm saying this not in the sense of criticism of the work she's doing, but in the sense of the need to prioritize for the council to not always focus on year-out, three-year, five-year aspirational stuff, but work on immediate public safety, quality of life issues, like getting the garbage out of the pocket park, and like taking care of ice and hazards. So that's brief enough, but you get my point.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, all right, so we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Move the consent agenda.
Do you want to pull the necessity resolution?
Yes. Well, yeah, we should. So with the consent agenda, I think we're, should probably pull the necessity resolution, as I think we need to talk about that. And we can talk about that when we get to the bond hearing discussion, which is item seven.
So I move the consent agenda as amended.
Okay, and this includes John's item. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you all for that. And so we have a presentation, or an update really, about Five Home Farm Way. Welcome.
Sit here.
And if you'd make sure to just speak into the microphone.
Yep.
Introduce yourself.
Hi, Jamie Duggan, representing the Two Rivers Partnership. Thank you for your time this evening and place on the agenda. I submitted my report. I'm sure, as you read, the beginning part of it, there was no new news, but Counselor McCullough requested, or reiterated, the interest in a written report, and something also that the public could access. So I felt it was important to provide a little bit of context to begin with, just to sort of, for those following along. The progress, I guess, that I can report is that we have signed a letter of engagement with legal counsel. Jeff Polabinski is heading up the team, and they have been at work over the last few weeks doing research on title and deed, the easements, rights of way, and other instruments that are in place. I am hoping that we'll be able to meet as soon as next week to get a sense of sort of what lies ahead, or what some of our options are. And we're at a point now, we've had plenty of time to get prepared. So once we sort of have a sense of where we're going, our intent is to continue to keep moving forward in at least the first goal of acquiring ownership, achieving ownership.
Any questions for Jamie?
A short one. So you mentioned you engaged a lawyer, and you feel that he will be able to get this property deed figured out?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Is it, I mean, is it more than a title search?
It's a complex situation, and dealing with a lot of property law.
Yeah.
But yeah, we've been working through it a little bit. And yes, Jeff specializes in real estate law and dealing with development and environmental considerations as well, all sort of part of that parcel. So I am. We tried to be very careful about whom we wanted to work with because of the complexity, and just to ensure that, you know, our resources were being spent wisely.
Thank you. Great. Any other questions? Okay, well, I'm certainly looking forward to the next report, and I'm just glad that, you know, y'all have taken that step, and that sounds like we're moving forward. That's, it's very encouraging. And if at any point along the way, you know, there's any, anything that you need from us, certainly let us know.
No, thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate the continued support.
And we'd be looking at April for the next...
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. We'd be looking at April for...
Okay, yep.
So it'll be the eighth or the 22nd, and the 26th is school vacation week.
It is, yes.
Okay.
So maybe the eighth, is that...
Yep. I'll keep an eye out for that. And I do, I do hope that I have a bit more of a robust report at that time.
Well, and that's, it's all good.
Yep, but I appreciate your, you know, continued support and patience with the process.
Thank you so much. Thanks for coming out.
Your comments are helpful, thank you. It's good that you're coming back.
Okay, so we are up to the bond discussion, and at least as was on the agenda, it was about the REC Center. And I'm going to turn this over to Bill to talk about.
So I've got a couple of things. I do have some numbers that you had asked to see, so I can flash them quickly up on the screen. And we do have another budget item, as you saw, that just came in after our last meeting, for $134,000 to repay the state for land purchase, so we should talk about that. We're going to recommend for staff that we postpone the bond vote on the REC Center until November, sorry, John. In large part, unfortunately, well, it's not funny, actually, for those that were at the hearing the other night, the work session, one of the two gentlemen who's leading, in fact, the gentleman who's leading the project unfortunately passed away two days after our public session, and from Breadloaf, the lead design person. So they're scrambling to replace him, and he really was the font of the knowledge. So I think we feel that we're not going to be able, if we were to really have to roll out information and have public sessions and those kind of things, that we would be at a bit of a disadvantage to try to do that between now and March. So just in terms of the public interest and the ability to digest this and communicate issues. But nonetheless, I do have information about the bond numbers nonetheless, so I'd be happy to give me a second to get it set up.
Is that still of value to you all, based on the fact that we might do this in November and not? Well, actually, do the numbers that you have reflect a bond in November?
It reflects bonds. I think it would be useful for people to just to see.
Okay.
It shouldn't take, it doesn't take very long.
Great.
And it also talks about the other issue.
Cool. Thank you.
Something's happening. So while we're waiting for this to come on, I'll talk briefly about the other $134,000. You may recall the city purchased three properties from near where Montpelier Beverage was, and the Vermont Center for the Blind and Visually Impaired, and the other parking lot, the TKS property, with federal funds to develop the One Tailored Project. And then when we were going to have private development there, in order for that to happen, the state declared part of that is surplus property, so that we could then sell it to, actually going to...
Stay close to that money.
To be the Moat Trust. And we were made aware at the time that we needed to repay those federal funds, and of course, we were planning to repay it with the proceeds from the sale. And then when we chose, or actually, they chose not to... Anyway, we chose not, when the deal didn't go through, we then were made aware, actually, we thought it was going to be $167,000, but I guess our share, our federal shares, $134,000. And that was partly understood. You may recall, the state provided an additional $1.2 million in federal funds to complete that project. So we've known for a couple of years that we were going to have to pay this bill, and they had said they'd give us some time, but hadn't specified the exact time due on that in that last Friday. After our budget hearing, I got a note from the state saying, here's the number, and we need it by December of this year. So obviously, that's money we don't have in the budget, and there's no real project budget for the Confluence Park or any other development there. And we've put on hold the notion that we would, that we would, I'm sorry, I'm trying to do too many things at once here.
You want to just do one thing?
Yeah. Sorry. So two potential bonds or financings, one for $5.2 million, the estimated project for the REC Center, and the other was the land repayment that I started to fumbly discuss that we have, that is due back to the state. I have since, just continuing on that thought while it's up there, I have asked for some clarifying questions from the state, such as, could we move it to the next fiscal year? What happens if we don't pay it? If we do pay it, does that mean we then own the property outright and have no further obligations to transportation funds? Or are there still continued strings and those kind of things? And have not yet received responses. Going back to the recreation center, if we, the impact on the budget, so the first year of a bond, depending when we issue it, it would be $114,000, about 1.3 cents on the tax rate if we were just to do it that way. The year two, $302,000, so it's just under three and a half cents. And then year three and thereafter declines from 300. So the year two is the highest payment. So if we were just to put that on the tax rate, that's what it would look like. If we were to look at it in our capital plan, we had a lot of discussion about this at the last meeting, and I think it was a little confusing. So here's our capital plan as it sits right now. The bold is what's proposed for this current budget, or the FY21 budget. So you can see, the total is $2.4 million, and $515,000 of that is equipment. We've got just under $600,000 of debt that we'll be paying, leaving us a balance of $1.285 million to do our annual projects with. That's our road, you know, roads, retaining walls, sidewalks, storm sewers, those kinds of things. All the things that, you know, facilities, all the things that show up in the capital project list. As you can see, that's an increase of $100,000 over last year, because not only are we putting $25,000 more in, but debt is dropping off from last year's $683. You can see if there were no additional debt in the general fund, the debt payments dropped down, about $300,000 between now and FY30. So the annual funding continues rising without us putting any more into the capital plan. I've actually factored a little bit into the equipment fund, because that's been flat for so long, and we're falling behind. But the annual debt funding would just continue rising on its own, left to its own devices. If we were to put a plan where we put that first $114,000 payment in this current budget that we're talking about, you can see that we go, our debt goes up to $713,000, and our annual drops down to 1.1 million. So it's about the same as last year. And then, then the following year, of course, the $300,000 starts kicking in and everything else, but it's offset by the drop-offs. So that, you can see, I'm trying to, I can't really see well enough here to go backward to just, here we go, just, there's, so that's what it looks like currently. This is what it looks like if we were to have the debt payment in this current budget. If we were to have the debt payment not start till the next year's budget, then obviously we would stay the same this year, and then the money would start hitting in the future years. However, we would still have 1.2 some odd million in FY22 for annual funds, which is, you know, more than what we would have at 1.08, but less than the 1.4. I mean, it just makes sense. We're adding $100,000 and then $300,000 into this total money, so it just shows how it would lay out the impact on those projects. And I think, I think those are the kind of things we were trying to figure out in our heads last week. And here, these are the actual numbers. And then if we were just taking the land purchase, if we were just to pay it this year, either add it to the budget, or whatever, it would be equivalent of 1.5 cents. We did, this is rough, this isn't with the bond bank, but we did a, just an Excel calculation. And so it'd be roughly $29,000 plus for, we borrowed it over five years, and about $15,000 or $16,000 over 10 years. So minimal impact. If we were to do that, of course, we're into paying a fair amount of interest on that, and we have those calculations. But depending on whether or not we have full, you know, if we have full control of the property, then it gives us full control over its future, whether we make it green space, or whether we make it, you know, private development space, or whatever. And that's one of the things I don't know about, is what happens if we pay this back? Then the land appreciates, we sell it in a private sale, do we get the windfall? Does, you know, do we, I don't, I don't understand yet. So that's all I have really on bonds, just to see how they fit in there.
Don? So do, do we need to make a decision of this $130,000 that's related to the land for paying back the feds as we make a decision about the budget?
Well, we need to, well, yes, I think, at least how we're going to approach it, we need to pay it back by December 1 of 2020. So that would be in this current budget year, or the year we're planning for FY21. So, and that is new information since last week. And, you know, unless they come back and say, well, you can wait till the following year. My hunch is the state is doing their budget, and they can use this repayment of money to match federal funds, so they could probably match about $1 million with this money, which is good. I mean, the state transportation funds could use that, and they certainly provided that to us. So my hunch is that they're doing their budget, and they need it for their FY21 budget, which is why the ask.
Okay, so my question comes, if we have to make a decision along with this budget, then I have a question about the option of five-year and 10-year. Because then you made the statement, you'd have to ask the feds if they would let us pay us back at that rate?
No, no, no. No, we would take a note or a bond, we'd put it on a ballot.
Pay it in full.
We would pay it in full, and just then repay the debt on it for the short period of time, if we chose to do it that way.
Okay, so then what was your comment about we'd have to ask the feds? Maybe I misunderstood.
Oh, what I'd like, what I, I'm trying to get clarity from the feds is, if we do this, does that end any, in our restrictions? So if we were to choose to then make it a development project and sell the land, and it comes in at more than $167,000, $134,000, do we, do we owe, do we have a continual obligation in that appreciation of the land value to them, or is that if we've paid this off?
Title, free and clear, right?
Right.
Okay.
But what we do know is we have to pay this.
Yes, thank you.
So just to add a little bit to the conversation, and we can talk about this more, I think, maybe when we get to the budget.
Yep.
But without counting the CBPSA, at this point, we're at 4%, and if we added the 10-year option, then, actually, let me get the exact number, it's 1571, then that takes us to 4.2, which is...
Or we could find $15,000 to take out.
Which could be, you know, other capital plan, could be, okay. So any other questions about this information so far? Yes?
So maybe we're going to talk about this related to, for the REC Center, so if we're pushing it off till November, is there still potential allocation for this year that would also be competing in terms of preparation, or is there work that we would be paying for, for this fiscal year?
No, so this...
That implicate, that somehow would play into that overall?
Well, the only piece of information that would be helpful on this, that I don't think we'll have, but we might have by August, there is an August primary as well, or the November election, would be the downtown master plan. And that, the expansion of that master plan was actually prompted by this particular piece of property, when there was a, you know, a difference of opinion whether it should be remained open and green, or whether it should be developed as, you know, a private taxable development. And we had a working group talking about that, and the conclusion was, instead of, instead of focusing on this property, this one property, let's look at it in the whole, and what the needs of the downtown are. And so that is when we expanded our downtown master plan study from just State Street to State and Main and the full downtown. So at some point, presumably, this land will be addressed in that plan. Now, if we were to sell it, we would recoup, I'm very confident we'd recoup this money, and it's just a question of whether we would realize more appreciation. And that had been our initial plan for how to repay this, was, we had a deal, we were going to sell it to the Moat Trust, they were going to pay us, we were going to pay the state back with this, all said and done. That deal went apart at the closing. They chose to just sell us the land and not buy this property. So that gave us a whole new set of decisions, and the council at that point said, we'd like to look at potential green space, you know, both options. And I think we made clear, and I think the sense at the time was, if this were to be an expanded Confluence Park or something like that, that this is a cost that needs to be built into the creation of that parkland. But I don't think we're going to have funding for that park by December to, and even the funding we're talking about is on the other side of the river, it's not this side. So I don't, you know, it just doesn't seem realistic that even if we were to purchase it now and seek to get ourselves paid back, or just call this a contribution to that parkland, that there will be a specific direction for that come December, unless the decision is, let's put it back on the private market and see what happens and redevelop it.
Can you actually go back to this slide before the REC building?
This is...
Well, I guess it's, I'm thinking about like, if, because if we put it on this...
Oh.
Right, yeah. Right, this one.
Yep.
$114,000. Anyway, just wanted to have that number in my head, so that, you know, when we get to conversation about the budget, maybe we can be talking about that. Unless we want to make decisions about this aspect of the budget right now. I'm usually inclined to like, take it all together, but I'm open to other things, yeah.
It sounds as though, from your presentation, that there are enough questions about, that we still don't know the answers to, that we're, it's not going to make sense to me to decide what to do with this $134,000 tonight, and we could well decide, we'll probably be deciding what to do at our next budget hearing on the 23rd. Looking at the figures that you presented, it looks as though if we, if we spread the repayment over, in debt, over five years or 10 years, we'd be looking at roughly $12,000 or $16,000 in interest...
Depending on which route you go.
For the deferral of that payment, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we just guessed at 3%. We don't know what the actual rate would be, but that's about what the bond deck is going right now.
But, so yeah, so my thinking is that this is very good information to have, but we're probably...
The only, the only issue to keep in mind is if we, if we choose to do this and use financing, then if we want to do it in March, we need to hold a public hearing on it, we need to have a necessity resolution. So one of the reasons we suggested pulling the necessity resolution was if we wanted to, if we weren't going to do the REC Center, but we wanted to change it to this, to at least a... to change it to this, to at least adopt that, to give us that option, we could do so. If, if you think you're not going to deal with this till August or November, then we don't have to do anything with it. But it is, so it's just, we do have formalities to be sure to do if we're going to, if we're going to even consider having this as a March item.
If we're going to bond it, there's no particular benefit to the city to doing it in March as opposed to August or November?
No, other than the, no, not really. I guess the only issue for the city would be is if it didn't pass. And so if we waited till November and the bills are due December 1...
Then we tell them, sorry, we don't have the money.
Well, leave that, or we'd have to pay it out of other funding that we, you know, and that would, it would be cutting it from some other place. So that would, that's the risk, is knowing the certainty of whether we have the funds available.
Well, and that's part of the questions to the state, right? Because if we don't pay them, then
Do they take the land?
Do they get the title, and then they could sell it?
Or do whatever they want.
With their own process, which is, seems also possible. Just to take this a little, oh, I guess I had another question out there, about, were there any, you know, do you want to decide about anything now regarding this? I mean, so one, one thing that I could picture doing right now is deciding, like, do, do you picture doing any of this in March? Or do you picture doing any of this in August or November? Or not at all?
Boy, that repayment looked, looked kind of far in the future when we first talked about it, didn't it?
Glenn?
Jack's comments persuade me that I don't think we have to do it tonight. August feels like a reasonable timeline to me. And, and if I were, if I were making the decision tonight, I think I would be in favor of trying the five-year repayment, but I'm glad to have the information. But yeah, I don't, I don't think that we should try for it in March.
Other thoughts? Connor?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in the same place. If we could get more information to make an intelligent decision on this, no harm in pushing it back to August at least.
Donna?
I would tend not to push it back, but that's all, but it's fine.
Yeah. Other thoughts? Go ahead, Lauren.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think August makes sense to me, give us time to just make, get that full information. We don't have some answers to questions.
And we may have it by next week, for all I know, but...
But August seems reasonable.
Well, we otherwise don't have to decide tonight. Jack, anything to add?
Nope.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions about the bond, either of these bonds at this point? Okay, well, we'll look forward to more information about at least the TKS property.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Not going to go too far, because budget's coming right up, right?
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Okay, so that was the bond discussion. So on to the, well, what would have been the bond public hearing.
But if there's no bonds being proposed, we don't need one.
Right, we don't have any bonds at the moment.
Could you take a comment on that?
Sure, sure, yeah.
Because I think it was warned for
Yeah, yeah.
On an adopted agenda.
No, that's fine. I was thinking about, we should probably open the public hearing anyway, so...
Yeah, especially before you about took a vote.
Right, so I'm going to officially open a public hearing on this. Yes, go ahead.
First, I want to thank you for the noise reduction of the computer room, and rhetorically ask what took you so long, but it is nice to be able to hear from the back of the room. The REC Center, what I see is us continuing to look at bonding before we've got a handle on the scale of the deferred maintenance of our sidewalks and roads. I mean, we're, we're living in a future we dream about Montpelier becoming, and we're not taking care of what I would see as a decade of deferred maintenance. And I don't know if you're anticipating water main replacement that keeps blowing out, you know, the sidewalk repairs, road repairs, potentially fiber zone, Wi-Fi zone downtown. These are things that we need now and that don't seem to be in our discussion yet. So as capital improvements, I would ask us to take a slow enough approach to where we get the full, I don't think that planning has been done of how many feet of sidewalk, yards of sidewalk, how many sections of road, how many sections of water main are vulnerable to blowout this winter, next winter. Because every time that happens, that totally derails the operation of our Public Works Department, and all hands on deck, all other priorities diverted. So I'm, I'm, I think I can, I can be more forceful in saying that, you know, we need to put some real focus on what are the costs and the potential liabilities of the number, the dollars and the scale of dollars of deferred maintenance that we need to catch up on. I don't know how big the problem is with the water mains, I just know it keeps blowing out. So that's a caution. I don't think that B-Trans is going to grab the property in November because, just by fiat or foreclosure, so.
Thank you. I do have some comments related to that, but they're more pertaining to the budget, so I'm going to hold on to them until we get to the budget. Any other comments from the public about the bonds, potential bonds? Okay. All right, so I'm going to close the public hearing, and then moving on to the, the budget, the budget public hearing. So I'm going to open the public hearing related to the budget. And Bill, did you want to give a presentation on this?
Yeah, I've just got an overview here, I'll just get it pulled up here. Won't take very long, also.
This is basically an updated version of the presentation we did when we presented the budget to you, only now, including the discussions that you've had. This is the first public hearing on the proposed budget. Council can still make changes, they preliminarily adopted this budget, but have tonight and next week to make final changes before it goes on the ballot. The budget goals are to implement the strategic plan that the council goes through in the spring, continue our capital and equipment funding plan for those issues such as streets and sidewalks, et cetera, to deliver our services, and we had a major challenge with insurance costs this year.
Can I, before you, actually, one of my questions was related to that. The continuing the capital and equipment funding plan, this, I recall at the end of last year, we were still $25,000
Correct.
From fully funding all of our infrastructure, and does this, does this budget include that?
Yes.
That increase? So we are increasing our capital plan by $25,000 to
So the total...
Sufficiently maintain all of our infrastructure.
Right, that was based on the steady state plan that did look at the segments of sidewalks and streets, and then we have a separate one for sewer, water and sewer, that's a longer term plan. But the total funding for, for capital plus debt payments plus equipment this year is 2.4 million
Thank you.
Out of our total budget. Okay. So I, this is just outline of our strategic planning framework, we'll go through that in detail. But breaking into its capacity, we take a look at how our, how ours budget relates to the items identified by the council. So we have $100,000 in funding for the Montpelier Development Corporation, we've maintained our planning and zoning staff, and we continue to implement our TIFF district, hopefully. For environmental stewardship, we have 5,000 for MEAC, we've continued, we've have stormwater projects included in the capital plan, we've got the 40,000 for the circulator bus, which could be also for microtransit instead, and 35,000 in the capital plan for our energy plan. For our inclusive, equitable, and welcoming community, we have 130,000 for our community fund, we awarded that, those grants at the last meeting. We've included $10,000 for our social equity contract work, we've got our FEAST program at the senior center, we're funding Montpelier Alive, again, at 32,000, we have our community enhancements, and at the last meeting, you add $45,000 for homelessness services. For sustainable infrastructure, we did increase the funding for the capital and equipment plan, we've continuing funding for our water and sewer plan, and then we made a couple of staff changes to try to put more people where we need work. Thoughtfully planned built environment, we continue the downtown improvement district, we continued funding for downtown projects in our capital plan, and we had $20,000 for the Public Art Commission. We may retain $110,000 for the Housing Trust Fund, and again, we've got our TIFF plan in place. For public health and safety, we've added the social worker in the Public Works Department, we've anticipated a big year for public events, we've continued our paramedic program in the fire department, our Project Safe Catch in the police department, and we actually have, we'll talk about this a little bit later, but some pretty great news in that department for our community this year. And we now have added the CVPSA ballot item for communications. In our responsive and responsible government, we've continued our communications efforts, our employee wellness, we're keeping our service levels, we, you know, we haven't cut any, any operations, and our bridge article for communications stays in the budget. So taking a look at our strategic plan, we talked about possibly upgrading street lights to LED, we have the light purchase in the capital plan, the bonding would be for all the wiring and everything else, and as you know, we, we may come back with that later in the year, and the idea is that would pay for itself. CSO projects are in the capital plan. So again, I, just to remind, not so much the council, but people watching, these items were all items that in March and April, the council said, these are things we want to talk about this year, and we'll need to address them in the budget. So now we're at the budget, and going, we're checking ourselves. So the equity consultant is in the budget, the downtown master plan is being completed, and the funding for coordinated signals is in the CIP, the emergency management funding is increased slightly, we had a plan for alternative fuels, we have a police hybrid on order. Parking garage operations, obviously, we did not include that in the budget until we know when the garage is actually going to be built and opened. Housing Trust Fund, we had 110,000, we increased infrastructure, we have not really changed much with our personnel plan, have not got that to you yet, we're still hoping to do it before March, we'll see. We have the social worker in, we chose not to do the public Wi-Fi due to the cost. The recreation center, we're still talking about, the Confluence Park, we approved 20,000 at the last meeting, and that is in the capital plan, and there's no firm place for, plan in place for Saban's pasture, so no funding associated with it. So these are things that are included, that, since you've talked about it. And then we still have, those are the things that we've talked about that are not yet included anywhere. Just very quickly, just snapshot, this is where our money comes from, to fund the general fund. Again, this is not counting the water and sewer fund, or funds that come from other sources. This is the key government operation, so about two-thirds of it is property tax, and then our other funding, and here's where we spend the money. Again, more than half of it is on our people, they do a lot of our work. You can see 12% is our capital plan and debt, and then when included with the equipment at 16%. And then just breaking that down by more function as opposed to the general, the big categories, you can see where the money goes. So, all in all, we have a property tax rate that is 5.1 cent increase, four and a half percent, average tax bill is $116. Water and sewer rates are being adjusted as per the long-term plan, and no changes required for sewer and CSO benefits. So our process is, tonight we have a public hearing, next Thursday we have our final public hearing, and in March we will have voting from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, with early voting to start in mid-Febuary. And that's the overview of the budget.
Okay, so I believe I've already opened the public hearing for this topic. So councillors have anything to say first, and then we'll go to the public? Yeah, go ahead.
I think I'm still a little uncomfortable with the $100,000 to the MDC. I know, like, the bulk of that appropriation goes towards the executive director position, which I think has been vacant for probably about six months now. So I think I would really like to see some numbers on that, get a better handle of what the MDC is doing right now, because, yeah, it's a good chunk of change right there. I'm not comfortable with the $400,000 at this point.
I think it's worth finding out what their need is, and if this is a, I would think that it is easier to take something out, how should I say this? We did make a commitment to them for five years, and if this is something that we're going to reduce, I think it probably ought to go to some kind of one-time fee, so that we can anticipate that we're going to honor our commitment. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, I think I'm also a little uncomfortable with, like, making five-year commitments when it's two-year council terms, it's a...
Good point.
I just haven't done anything.
True, true, fair. How, what is, what is the, other thoughts on getting some information or on that item? Glenn?
I think it'd be great to get more information. I spoke with the MDC director myself, maybe a month back or so, Lisa Maxwell, am I getting that name right?
Mm-hmm, yep.
And it was really helpful to me just to talk to her in person. I think it would be great to have her here, kind of for a check-in and follow up on that. I am, I think, relatively comfortable with the number as it is, but it has been kind of a question mark for me the whole time, and it's true, you know, neither you nor I were, were there when, when the five-year commitment was made, so I think we should, and we have had gaps in staffing, so makes sense to, to check in.
General agreement over there? Okay. Okay, let's, let's plan on that. Yeah, go ahead, Donna.
I thought we've asked, wanted them to come in before, and I realize I didn't follow up, because they were, were without staff before, and we sort of wanted to see the budget. So definitely, I think we're overdue to hear from them.
Yeah, fair. So let's, let's see if we can get them in here next, next public hearing, and, and we'll go from there. Any other comments? Jack?
I feel like I should know the answer to this, but I don't, so I'm asking for myself and for a constituent. With regard to the, we're budgeting for the controls for the signals downtown, and I have a constituent who lives on Barry Street, he's interested in, well, what the timeline is for the controls and for the signal at the Barry Street intersection.
I think we'll have to get back to you on that.
Okay.
It's, you know, it's in the budget, but we're not sure when we'd exactly be doing the work, so.
Anything else? Okay, comments from the public?
Hi, Eric Arail, I forget where I live now, Berry City, representing Montpelier, representing the homelessness task force. I know there's concern in the budget about the money we're asking for, and I am also a Berry City resident, and I have to say that, first of all, thank you for even considering the money that you're giving us, or thinking about giving us. And it's been able to open doors and to talk to other cities, which is phenomenal. It's opening up doors to talk to Berry City and saying, hey, Montpelier's doing this, and thinking about this, and why don't you guys think about this as well? And so I know there is some concern and about Montpelier leveraging all this money, but it's a pilot, we're starting things, and it's starting to move and shake, and people saying, oh, Montpelier's doing it, let's tackle, tack on what Montpelier's doing. And people are starting to start talking, and it's talking about a very serious issue that's affecting a lot of other towns. So, yes, it's a lot of money. It's, you know, increasing taxes for a lot of people, but it's also helping a lot of people. And eventually, Montpelier might not be, might be able to take this money as seed money and helping a lot more people. So thank you.
Thank you.
Zach Hughes, Montpelier. So we started this out as a little, well, it started back in, I've actually been doing the work for a long time around, around Montpelier with a bunch of people, Dawn here, Erica, and, but this work's been going on for a while. And in July, I was in Washington DC. Unfortunately, I wish I'd been up here, but I wasn't. And it came to my attention that there was a, here, there was, you know, some concern with business owners in the city and all this, and it really turned into this task force finally. And I think, then the task force kind of came together, and we have come up with some really good ideas. And I could say we're actually doing some great work in there. And I can say that there has been, you know, healthy criticism. I get that, that happens. But I still think we're doing the work, and, but we're also very invested in what we do, because we're still doing our work. You know, some of us still doing the work outside the task force, you know? So it's really cool that we're able to do that and to be able, and Montpelier shares a very unique opportunity here. They could be the first, you know, city to do this in the area here. And I agree with councillors here who think it should be a mutual effort with the other cities. I agree with that. And I think that, you know, it's, it's money well-spent. I was out there the other night, and in fact, in front of a business, working with some, talking with somebody who was just transiting through the area. And I was just trying to figure out where they were going. And so this is kind of the thing that we would want to be able to do, you know, so that it doesn't cause any issues with businesses. And I think that's just great, just talking with the person, being there is critical. And I think that's what, and being able to connect with a person is critical. I think it's, that would be the difference between the social worker and the, the street workers, the street workers able to get in there. And, you know, and based on lived experience and peer support, the reason I'm bringing this here tonight is because the weather was preventing me from getting down here last couple of times. So I just really want to lay that out. And I really do appreciate the city's, you know, amount that they, that we came up with. And I continue to support the community's work and the city's work, and appreciate the city's, city council's willingness to really look at this issue. And I can say that we too believe that we should share the burden. I also like to remind the council, I was just talking with my board, one of the boards I'm on today about this, that if it wasn't for nonprofits, the city would be picking up a larger portion of the cost, because nonprofits out there are doing a lot of the work. And I think that's really important. So for now, I'll let this go, and we'll see where this goes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Dawn Little again with the Montpelier Task Force. I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but I wanted to respond to a concern that Donna brought up briefly toward the end of the last meeting. And you had said, I'm trying to figure out how you put it, but you were saying that, you know, the street outreach is good for, as a Band-Aid. And you were talking about the need to look at the long-term as well as at the Band-Aid. And I couldn't agree with you more. I think that's something that all of us need to see happen, and I'm hoping that we will have some time, the task force will now have some time freed up to look at it. But obviously, that sort of thing takes longer to do. But I also wanted to point out that in, over the past couple of years, street outreach has partnered with the continuum of care and the existing agencies or, you know, the experts, and that there are a number of people who were out on the streets who are now permanently housed. And just to point out that the outreach can be flexible depending on the specific needs of the community, and that we are often the people who will get the neediest people in contact with the experts and support them through the process. So in addition to being a Band-Aid and handing out sleeping bags, we also do look at getting people into long-term housing. You know, we're probably not the people who are going to design that and answer the big questions, but helping to facilitate it to happen. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
So Steve Whitaker, I'd like to commend your willingness to put 45,000 in the budget. I'd still encourage you to go to 56, and I'll tell you why. But what I see is, you recall, I leaned on you a long time to create the task force. I resigned. I feel like the task force is loaded with folks that are accepting of status quo, that there's no vision, there's no direction in the proposal of how to spend $50,000. I think that would be a huge missed opportunity. I'd rather hold the money back and wait to use it as matching funds. But the proposal to fund just street outreach, porta-potties and lockers is seriously not what we need. We, we need to put people into shelter, even if it's modest, very modest, low-cost shelters. And this is where I think the opportunity is. We could, we could set a statewide model by adopting some of these, the pod concept, where you have privacy and an indoor, you put a number of pods in a building with shared bathroom facilities, or the huts, insulated huts in an outdoor facility. Both of those have extreme potential to break the mold of warehousing people on a common basement floor. The accelerating mental illness that I see, maybe I'm not qualified to call it illness, but it's mental distress that I'm seeing among the folks. I've been doing street outreach to a degree. Dawn does a whole lot more, Zach does his, you know? But I would hate to squander 30 or 50,000 maintaining. It is true that it's nice to give people help, but I think A, halftime, street outreach work would be a sufficient use of a portion of the budget you're willing to make. I think you really need to commit to investing in a plan and demand a plan. And a plan would explore brick-and-mortar housing for parents, single parents with children. Emergency, I've got my mind, got my eye on two buildings that are available or that are potential uses for these. I don't want to put them into the public record yet. If you're on the street, a porta-potty is counterproductive. I mean, it is not heated, there's no hot water, there's no wash-up, and when you're living in the street, you need to thoroughly wash up after you use. So it's, this is, this is a Band-Aid approach. Please do not waste $50,000 of precious money by not being very specific about what you expect back from that. So we need real bathrooms. You could insist on a study of all the available bathrooms that could potentially be negotiated for 24 access, 24-hour access. City Hall's bathrooms, I've spoken to the police chief, and he hadn't considered the fact that the back door here could be put on an electric lock, you could buzz over to the dispatcher, the dispatcher could buzz you in. If there's no motion on the motion sensor, that's a question for your electrician. Do the motion sensors that turn off the lights in these bathrooms, could they be triggered so that you know whether a person is still in there or not? A trigger for, I think the real fear of making bathrooms available and supervised is of an overdose. Just let's acknowledge that and just put in protections. But allowing these city hall bathrooms, which are handicapped accessible, hot water, et cetera, they're an ideal solution, and we haven't explored it. Letting people in without, and nowhere beyond, is possible. Camping, I've suggested in some of the other things I've written that Peace Park is one option. But again, we could commission the plan to require a study of alternatives for trailer-based bathrooms that do have included plumbing. I know some communities have built buses where people can shower. I know I'm not the only one that went over two minutes. I'm not worried about it.
I may cut you off at five.
Yeah, no, yes. But my point is, we need to be building privacy and dignity, and I am somewhat sobered by the homelessness events in the State House today. It's, y'all aren't the only ones lacking vision. So if that's any comfort. There's a lot of folks that are shooting for the stars. We want full private apartments for folks, and we won't do anything else. And that is just too far of a reach for the immediate need on the street today. We have people that need shelter that don't fit into the basement of Bethany, and they really need some modest shelter adjoining bathrooms. And we could do that. And the pods, Yestromorrow is willing to cooperate this spring on pods and huts. We could do, set a model that actually creates a business here. Home Farm Road as well. Home Farm Road.
And you're at about five minutes, just so you know. If you, any final thoughts? No?
No, they're not final. Home Farm Road is also an ideal possibility, an idea that could be fleshed out. They've already got jobs available for Ague and Dog River, and there's water and sewer there. You don't need a certificate of occupancy in the building to allow people to camp there.
Okay. Thank you, Stephen.
Why am I the only one to get cut off? Just because you're tired of, you know?
No, it's, there's lots of folks that would like to say something. Yes, hello?
Hi. Hi, I'm sure a lot of you guys know my face. My name is Karen Essencio. I started working with the Good Samaritan Haven down at the Bethany Church two months ago now. And I just wanted to bring you guys' awareness that we've been past the capacity at the church. We hold 20 beds, and we've been past that limit since the beginning, since it opened up November. So my idea, if you guys consider it, which honestly, I really shouldn't have to bring this up, because I think it's ridiculous at this point, but I think that there should be emergency vouchers, hotel vouchers in this local area. We have five hotels in this town. There's no reason why these hotels can't help people that's homeless, because 211 is not really useful at this point. They've been, the client, most of the clients have been trying to stay at the Bethany Church. I know that because I talked to them personally. And even when they get vouchers, it's only reliable in Barry, which nobody has the transportation needs to get there. So most of the time, these people don't get to go to these vouchers, these hotels. So I'm really hoping that you guys consider collaborating. I don't know the budget, I don't know how the money works here, honestly. I don't know how any of this works, but I really believe that we could have a lease emergency housing vouchers with the shelters. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So you were saying that the vouchers are available for hotels in Barry?
Yes. 211 does not support Montpelier vouchers.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I will confess that that is a part of the law that I don't know either, you know, how that voucher money works, but it's an interesting question, and I think worth looking into.
Well, I just want to let you know that mostly, there's been a lot of people that's been coming to the Bethany Church over here that has not been able to stay, because we've been past the capacity, and most of them get stranded, because there's no other solutions. And I feel like there is a lot of hotels in this area that have empty beds that is collecting dust, and there's no reason why people can't be staying in these beds. So I just feel like we should be able to work together and figure this out.
Thank you for bringing this up.
No, thank you, guys.
Donna, do you have a question?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Can you give us an idea of how many people are turned away because there's not a bed available?
Right now, at least over 15 people.
Thank you.
That's a lot, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dan Richardson. I'm resident at Montpelier in the 3rd District. And I just had a couple of questions and maybe some comments. I'll try and keep my time brief. First of all, Bill, I had a question for you. We were mentioning in the Green Mountain Transportation Budget that that could be moved to micro-transportation. If you could just define what micro-transportation is, and is there a timeframe in which that decision would have to be made?
I will try, and we have two council members who are actually more informed than I am. But micro-transit is basically, I think of it kind of almost like as a public Uber. You can, you can call on demand, a vehicle comes and takes you to your place. There's, there's an app that you use, maybe you'll double up or triple up rides, instead of the circulator that just rides around town, it'd be more targeted service. And I know Vtrans is studying it pretty carefully, along with GMT, and they are talking about rolling it out this year, I think. And I believe that in any of their funding conversations, they've known that the city's put up 40,000 for the circulator and would be willing to convert it to this transit, if that's what they wish. So that's what I know, I'll let.
They actually have put a grant in to help fund the micro-transit, so they could really do a broad-scope outreach, education and branding. But they also have made a plan to integrate Hospital Hill and the circulator and the Capital Shuttle. Those funding and those services and those service hours together to really make a much more solid system there that's on-demand response, instead of a fixed route.
Okay.
And so I think, one way or another, whether it's with the grant or combining all the past funding for these other routes, they're going to try to start the micro, we are going to try to start the micro-transit in July.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't an either-or type of situation, because I think, you know, there is an essential function that the Green Mountain Transport provides in making sure that these key circulator points are hit. And there's a number of people that rely upon them, but as the last speaker indicated, you know, this sort of micro-on-demand transportation, if they need to get to Barry to seek shelter or housing, you know, can be equally important as well. And so I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't something that was either-or. I'll offer one comment about the homelessness task force funding, which is that I've done a lot of work with nonprofit grant funding in the legal sector, and this is very common in the first year where you have money available. Task forces or groups that aren't used to having this funding often need a little bit of creative room to develop. But I think, you know, the council's correct in looking going forward, what are the results? What are the uses of this money? What are the productiveness results? And I think that's, you know, second year is when you really have to start to measure it and say, what are we, what are we putting this money towards? The other question about the master plan funding, did that include both the budgeting for the consultant as well as public outreach? Or is that, is that going to phase in?
Are you talking about the energy plan?
Right.
That was for the consultant to develop the plan of how we will reach our net zero goals, and then I'm sure we'll recommend more funding and more process after that.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Laura Rose, I had a question about the management of the debt service maturity. And this is really directed to Bill and his councillors, who should be looking at this, because right now, I only have audited statements for the year ending June 30th, 2018. But in there, it was mentioned that in the year ending 2019, the debt for government and business would be 2.3 million. But when you look just five years away, 2024 to 2028, that number is jumping to 7,600,000. So in five years, we're going to need in our budget an additional $5.3 million to service debt that we already have. And I don't see any planning for this. This is a huge change in our debt payments, and it's only five years away. Bill?
Yeah. Most of that has to do with the wastewater plant, which is a huge increase and is being offset by fees that are coming in from new sources. So it has actually been planned. We're going to be doing organic energy and selling, as this, we'll be able to take food wastes and things as the state begins to mandate that. food wastes and things, as the state begins to mandate that. And in fact, next meeting, we'll be hearing a presentation about the Phase 2 converting to energy, which, so these will be, the payments will be going out, but they'll be offsetting revenues coming in to cover them.
Five million in revenues increase? Okay. I've requested the financial statements, they're still in the box there at the clerk, so I'm just hoping to get some of those before next week's discussion, because I'm really concerned, I want to see what happened in the year ending 2019, about all the accruals in the budget for paying down principal that weren't made. And this is, you know, in 2018, I think it's like, over $5 million that you allocated, but didn't pay. Like, you're making allocations to pay principal, which will reduce the cost in the long run by lowering your interest payments, and you're not making those payments. The money is on the budget, and the money going out is zero. So I'm piling information about that.
Yeah, we'll have to go through that. I'm not sure that's the correct interpretation of those financial statements. We're paying the principal and interest payments as due by the bond bank, which is who we borrow our money from.
I'm just looking at the accredited state, you know, the statements, and they're not going out.
We'll have our finance folks look at that. And I'm sorry, I don't know the answer off the top of my head.
Do you have a request into me?
I, I do.
What, could you tell me what that is?
Well, mainly to finance, I know you've been in meetings.
Oh, the Finance Department, yeah, I'm sorry.
Some of that. Well, there was a request for you in there, too, but anyways.
I mean, could you tell me what that is? I would like to know.
It was a packet for the meeting, but I was able to get it myself. So thank you. I want to look at that, though, with you. Are you making your principal payments as you're putting them on the budget? Because I don't think you are. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Connor?
It's more a proposal than a proposal. You know, as I'm looking at the Homelessness Task Force allocation, I'm definitely comfortable with the amount we're funding there. I'm still a little unclear about the peer outreach position, again. Who are they employed by, sort of what their specific length duties are? I think I get the sense that, you know, it's a little more meaningful, coming from somebody who might have been in this position before. But I keep thinking, like, anything worth doing is worth doing right. And I'm worried about, like, Berry funding their side of the social worker position. I'm worried about state money coming down for that. And I just want to throw it out there, like, what if we just did a full-time social worker position under the MPD? I'm seeing Zach shake his head here. That we knew exactly what they were doing, who they were reporting to. We would do it right the first year, right off the bat, and there would be some accountability in reporting back to the council on that. I wouldn't see it as a sworn position with a badge or anything, which might make people feel a bit more comfortable. I'm just throwing that out there.
I can answer that.
Yeah. I'm not proposing necessarily, I just wanted to make sure.
No, I mean, so, again, Erica Rail, the reason why we proposed a peer support person rather than a social worker is, or an outreach person, is because a lot of people relate to somebody who's had lived experience, and not a social worker or letters after their names. A lot of people that have chronic homelessness, or have a disability, or maybe even a mental health diagnosis, would relate to somebody who has had the same experiences, rather than a social worker who's been to college, studied, not exactly had the same lived experience. For example, somebody like Dawn, or myself, who have a lived experience of homelessness, or a mental health diagnosis. We might have, relate to somebody who's been out there on the streets. A person might have trust issues with a social worker, or a mandated reporter. And we might be able to make a peer worker, or a street outreach person might make a connection, whereas a social worker might not make that connection. We are currently researching job descriptions of peer outreach workers, talking to other organizations who have hired outreach workers. We know there's been outreach workers hired in Burlington, Brattleboro, Bennington. So we haven't, you know, really narrowed down a job description, who they'd fall under, et cetera. Some people have done it under Vermont Psychiatric Survivor, some have done it under Howard Center. So we haven't narrowed the focus down yet, but we are working on it. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I guess, like, what do you think, we'll have a little more clarity on this?
We will have more clarity on this. This is brand-new. It's a, you know, Burlington did it as a pilot project four years ago, and they're still working on getting out the kinks. So we're, I'm not a big fan of reinventing wheels, so we're looking at what different things happen. Every town in Vermont is different, so we're trying to see what works. Dawn's been doing it a long time, so we're trying to take her lived experience of doing this pro bono, and what works for Montpelier.
Donna, did you have something, Dan?
Dawn Little, again, I'd like to say, first, that it is entirely possible to build accountability into a street outreach position. That really shouldn't be a problem. The reason we haven't given you the details, we don't know who would be hosting the program, and the focus may depend on, well, okay, more thorough assessment of exactly who is out there, and of what the, for instance, what Bethany, what the overflow looks like in the future, what changes are made in the 211 system, so that our responsiveness fund may be able to be used to match that. That might affect things. But it can be tailored, pretty much, to the needs of this community. And I would also like to say that the, in the past, some of the people that I have brought in to fill out the forms, to go through the process, to get housing, and have subsequently gotten housing, have specifically, in fact, many of them have specifically said to me, "We don't think this is going to work. We have no faith in this. This is garbage. We are doing this because you want us to do it." And so a lot of this is about relationship, and you, and about going out and finding the people, you know, because if you wait for them to come to you, it's not going to happen. It's already not happened for these people for years. I mean, the existing system has not worked, or they wouldn't have been out there for years. So it's sort of, I guess, part of the position is facilitating the access to the existing systems, in whatever way it needs to happen, and I don't know, I think a social worker is a great link in that, especially when people come in contact with the police. But I do think, in terms of going out and finding people and gaining their trust, I think you need an outreach worker of some kind. And I think people who have had bad experiences with the system are a lot more likely to trust someone they consider to be a peer. But the accountability can be, can be tailored to the situation.
Thank you. Donna?
Well, I remember making that motion, and the idea was, the $45,000, and no specific line items, and then we were going to work with the Homeless Task Force, give them more time to form everything out. So I just want to go back to that. So I may put them in a place where they didn't expect to present more detail, because I'm not expecting it now.
I think part of it is that, since we don't know who's going to host the program, we don't know what type of administrative structure is going to be, you know, we do need to find someone who's willing to host it, or it needs to be subcontracted, which is also a viable possibility, which might actually reduce administrative costs, if you subcontracted it. And you could also build accountability into that. But, but depending on the host, that's going to, the structure will vary in terms of the accountability, and the, you know, the breakdown of the hours, probably. But, you know, it's adaptable.
Good. Thank you.
Forgive me, can I, just please? Yeah, no, and what you're saying, what Dan is saying...
Do you want to introduce yourself?
Sorry.
It's okay.
My name's Ken Russell. I live in District 1. And, and my streets are nice. The winter parking ban hasn't affected me. No. No, seriously, though, we've done, we're talking to a lot of people, understanding the lay of the land. The continuum of care, who was run through Capstone, Tony Grout was at that meeting the other day. They're talking very much the same language, very much the same things. Statewide level, we're at the State House today, they're talking, I mean, this is not, this is not just pulling something out of midair. This is, this is the zeitgeist, this is what people are thinking about. As Dawn said, yeah, there are structures of accountability. We will come back to you soon, and yes, we heard Counselor Bate say, you know, "Come back." And I checked in with people, that, you know, we had a little bit of time, but we're not slouching on this. And, and what, you know, having a good, solid, professional program, that really makes a difference, is something we're very interested in. So, thanks.
Great. Thank you.
Steve Woodacre, again. The, you hear these words, "Continuum of Care," and "Homeless Management Information System." I had encouraged, before the task force first met, I sent a memo out, saying, "We really need to focus on the privacy dimensions of these services we're trying to learn to provide." The state has not done that. The state has a task force that's supposed to coordinate the Homeless Management Information System and deal with privacy policies. That board has fallen apart, hasn't met in a year or two. And here we are, like, sure, let's jump in and give everybody's personal information to this, you know, system. We're all on board, and speaking the same language. We need to pause and step back, and decide whether we're encouraging folks to put data in unsecure hands, where you, it may come back to haunt you. Independent contractor is a proper, low-overhead way to handle the street outreach. I think a halftime person, I think somebody like Dawn could work three hours a day and save up, book the extra hour for the on-call emergencies. You know, that's, that's about the level of service that we need right now. We, we need to fund, you, y'all need to decide whether you want to fundamentally begin now to intercept the OEO money. I'm hoping that Bill has made efforts, I've asked to talk to Bill before he talked to Sarah Phillips at OEO, but it's important that we keep our options open, in case Bethany is not an option for next winter, that we have control over our share of that 100, $500,000 that Good Sam currently takes. It doesn't mean we couldn't contract with Good Sam to run a shelter, if another church opens up, but it means we need to keep our options open. We need to focus, one of the tasks you should give your task force, and/or the outreach worker, it's important they be independent, is accountability. We've got drug dealing going on right outside of Another Way, currently. We've got people tweaking it at other shelters, too, that are managed. That, there are problems that need oversight, and I know you want to argue that they're just fine, and, you know, Good Sam and Another Way don't, can do no wrong, but that's just not true. We've got real problems there, and we need to decouple, and take a real strong look at how much more we invest in that. How much money is in the budget for Public Works Investments catching up? $2.4 million total is, is a farce, compared to what I'm seeing going to hell in this town. So we need to think about, I know it's late in the budget process, but I'm asking you to really consider whether we might need twice that amount. How much is in the budget for garage appeals? Let's say it's very likely that the opponents could prevail. Are we prepared to take it? Is the city prepared to take it to the Supreme Court? I suspect they are. Have you budgeted several hundred thousand dollars for appeals on that garage? How much is it worth, and when do you start making a contingency plan? The State House today took up parking, and there was great interest in the Senate, among a number of parties in the Senate of Ops, to pursuing the pit as an alternative. Chief Fekos was there for part of that. And I think we're, we're remiss in not exploring our other options and creating a contingency plan, rather than dumping good money after bad, on a poorly planned and poorly processed garage design. Thank you.
Zach, do you have something?
I want to say something.
While we're setting Zach up, I just wanted to add a comment for Connor and others, just to be clear. The social worker that we're proposing actually will not be a MPD employee. They will be an employee of Washington County Mental Health. We'll have an arrangement with the two police departments, and just so you know.
So I will say this again, I want to answer these questions, so. This has actually been done before the street outreach was done under Another Way, through Good Samaritan several years ago. It was done under a very small grant, so there was accountability done. I was on that team, along with Rick DeAngelis, and we had to submit data and hours every week. So we were very accountable to what we do. I still have that data in my system in my house. So I, I mean, the accountability goes with any profession. I have accountability at my work. I'm, you know, and I'm a peer worker there, and I'm supposed to submit logs when I work, and hours, so it doesn't go away. We don't know who would host that, because we don't know if this has been approved yet. So once that happens, we would, we would be able to figure out who's going to host this. And I think that everybody could work together, because I don't think, I mean, it's all, it sounds like a great idea on paper, Connor, social worker's full-time, we got this in the bag, and that's all good, but it really doesn't really pan out that way. I wish it did, we could make it simple. It just doesn't, in fact, I understand, as we were sharing this social worker, unless you guys were looking to hire another social worker on top of that. But in any case, I kind of want to stay away from the social worker, except the link-up, maybe. And so I just wanted to let you know that, and I wanted to answer a quick question about the hotels. We acknowledge that this is an issue, about getting people to the hotels. I could tell you that it depends on who the hotels contract with, they contract with, you know, they do work through ESD, the funding streams to the hotels, depends who ESD is doing work with. Most of the hotels are in Berry. So, you know, at one time, we had one in Montpelier, I don't know if we're still doing that one. And also, people going into the overflow have been determined, maybe, may have been determined, or may not have been, depending on the situation, they may have been determined not eligible for the hotel, because there's a, maybe a bed at overflow. It's possible, but if overflow turned them away, theoretically, yeah, they call 211. There's always a chance of a glitch there. And, you know, the 15 people would definitely go without, one of those 15, you know, something like that would go without. It is possible, but I just want to answer about the hotels, because that's, that's done through, you know, contract with ESD, or Agency of Human Services. I believe the Econ Lodge at one time, or the old Econ Lodge up here, used to be one of those hotels, but I don't think that's the case right now. But I just wanted to say, we'll continue this work you guys sent us on, and we appreciate the extra time, and we'll keep you guys updated. Thank you.
Thank you. Wait.
Hi, my name is Nancy Smith. I live in District 1, and the homelessness program, problem around here, it really concerns me on a daily basis. I lose sleep over it. And I'm just trying to figure out what's going on, so I really don't know a lot about what's going on, but as an employee of Washington County Mental Health, I have to say that, as soon as I became an employee of Washington County Mental Health, my friends who live closer to the street, immediately started to say things like, "Oh, you've gone to work for the enemy," or things like that. They're definitely afraid of Washington mental health. And so I still think that, when they're talking about some sort of a liaison that is a peer, that's very important, there's got to be somebody approachable. They're not going to approach somebody from Washington County Mental Health. So I think you should be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
I just want to kind of forward what Steve Woodacre was kind of saying, and Zachary. I just want to make it clear, how many of you guys know that The Nest is a subsidized housing on Berry Street? It is owned by Good Samaritan Haven, and I think it's about, I think, 10 beds available at that place. Now, the issue with The Nest, what I want to bring up, is that you're not qualified to be at The Nest unless you have stayed at the Good Samaritan Haven for 60 days, at least. And remind you that the Good Samaritan Haven is at past capacity, about 25 beds, and anybody that's staying at the Bethany Church is not qualified to stay at the Good Samaritan Haven, because it's already past capacity. So, and the mission statement of The Nest is for people to, like, get a job, you know, save money, get housing in the future. So I just want to bring that awareness, that the system is kind of... is kind of has a lot of flaws behind it, and I'm hoping that you guys could help fix that in the future. I don't know. So, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Do you know who actually operates The Nest?
Who operates The Nest?
Is it operated by Good Samaritan?
Yeah, that's all I know.
I wasn't sure if it was a separate, thank you.
Oh, no, yeah, sure.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, all right. Well, thank you all. And so, I'll close the public hearing on that. Any further comments from council? Okay, fair enough. So, we will have another public hearing on this, on the 23rd.
Do you need a motion for that?
I'm looking at you.
You don't need to unless you're changing the budget number, which it didn't sound like you are.
Okay, all right. Thank you all. So, we're going to move on to the warning of the annual meeting. So, for this, we have the attached potential draft of the warning. So, is there anything, I mean, I have some assumptions about this, but is there anything you want to, either of you want to start out with for this?
I just mentioned that, obviously, as per usual, it's kind of a placeholder warning, that we get last-minute changes, we get last-minute money, information in there. So, this is more of a, as much of anything, is a legal formality to make sure it's.
Correct. It's also a chance for our citizens to ask about anything that's on it if they didn't understand.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, so I'm going to open the public hearing on the warning. Thank you. One question I have is, based on our conversation previously, I wonder if we would be removing Article 12?
Yes. Well, assuming that's the decision, yes, that's what I took away.
That's what I, I feel like I heard that earlier. Is that, is that fair?
I didn't hear a motion to put it on, so I guess that's.
Because it's not in there, so we didn't need to take a motion to take it.
Well, it's on, it is on the draft.
The draft.
Warning, Article 12 for.
But it's not, I think it was in our budget number.
It's not.
Okay.
Right, so.
Do you need a motion to remove it?
I move to delete Article 12 from the proposed warning.
Why not? Be safe.
I make a motion to remove Article 12 from the current.
You want to second Jack's?
Fine, fine. Second Jack.
All right, further discussion on that, part of it. One question I have about that, I think it goes without saying that all the other articles would move up a number. Okay.
Put in a new Article 12.
Replacement Article 12. Any further conversation about Article 12? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Just along those lines, though, would we have this article if we did the loan to pay back the state?
That could go in there.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else on here? Well, I actually do have another question. So, this is about Article 14, CBPSA. So, I'm going to direct this at you, Donna, I hope that's okay. My understanding of the MOU with Berry currently is that we have this split between costs that's 47 and 53?
Fifty, yeah, right. And so, it would reduce the city's portion, like, I had it here, 23. Would make Montpelier 23,500 instead of 25,000 even. I hesitate to bring it up earlier because the Public Safety Authority Board meets tomorrow evening and will modify its own warning notice at its public hearing on its warning notices tomorrow night.
So, is it?
That's what it's likely to be because the current MOU, Memo of Understanding on the Share Costing Formula is the 5347.
So, a question about that. Do we need to have another public hearing on the warning?
We're having it next week.
Next week. So.
We could change it.
We could change it. We could propose a change tonight, and then you'll have your meeting, and we can revisit it next week.
Okay.
Or not next week, the 23rd.
Yeah, that's next week.
Oh, it is next week.
Yeah, it's next week. It's boom, boom. So, you'd like me to make the motion tonight? I just feel hesitant because the board itself hasn't changed its initial warning. It will do so tomorrow night.
I think we should, knowing that we could change back if we needed to, but just to know that we recognize the MOU as having a different percentage.
Absolutely. Okay, so.
Before you do that, Stephen, do you have something to say?
I want to just call to your attention that they're also trying to make progress on a contract to get something that's credible as a plan, that will attract new members and other funding sources. And you're missing a delegate since Ashley's resignation. So, it's important, I don't know the process of how, whether you have to advertise that or you can appoint somebody in the interim, but you need another vote. Montpelier needs another vote on that board, potentially as early as tomorrow night. So, there is a lot at stake because there's things are moving at the state level on dispatch arrangements. And if we're not going to lose our entire investment in CBPSA, we need to be riding on top of it, as I've been saying for a year and a half or so. So, if you're at liberty to appoint somebody, you should do that.
Thank you.
Did you want to, did you want to make a motion?
I was going to make a motion to change Article 14 now on the existing warning, that the amount would be 23,500 from Montpelier and 26,500 from Berry City. The total, 50,000 remains the same.
There's a second? Further discussion on this particular item? Donna, go ahead.
There is actually going to be some additional warning because it's for studies. We can name it. That's a telecommunication study plan. And so, I've offered some warning and we'll finalize it tomorrow night again. So, this won't be the exact warning, but the numbers I'm supplying is the 2347.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks for that clarification, and thanks for, you know, looking out for us. Okay, further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, great. Thank you for that. And is, are there any of the other numbers that we need to change? Anything else that needs to be revisited here?
No, we don't have the final school numbers yet either. And we, this, we probably, well, we've got to change this by $1,500 now for.
Which one?
Oh, never mind. No, because that's not the debt. Nope.
Anything else we should flag for this? Okay, any further comments from the public on the warning? Okay, so I'm going to close the public hearing. And based on that, because there were some changes, I think we probably should have a motion to set the next hearing for next week?
I think it's already been warned anyway, but yes.
Oh, okay.
I move, we schedule a second public hearing on the proposed town, city meeting warning, incorporating the changes we made tonight.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, great. Thank you. And, all right, so we have one more regular business item this evening, which is the first public hearing on proposed amendments to the dog ordinance. So, I'm going to open the public hearing. Killing it tonight with opening public meetings. Remembering, yeah. Okay, so, for this, either Bill or Donna, would you like to explain these changes?
Probably Donna or Cameron.
The wording that was now being proposed is reflected exactly what's stated in the noise. And Cameron did the research to show that indeed, other towns in their dog ordinances keeps this broad instead of 20 minutes or 30 minutes, and it works very well. Add your comments.
Well, that's really the whole and some of my comments, is that this really does realign our language that's consistent throughout all of our ordinances. And in all the study that I did do, other organizations really don't put time limits, and it allows a certain amount of flexibility within the ordinance. And the league also does not really recommend putting time limits in there as well. So, if it helps, I can read it aloud, the proposed changes again, if you'd like.
I think would, sure, let's, just for clarity.
Okay, so, we only edited one section in Article 2, Dog and Animal Control Ordinance. It's Section 8, 202, Definitions Number 8. So, it says, "Nuisance shall mean any dog or domestic pet that chronically disturbs the quiet, comfort, and repose of others by frequent or continued barking, howling, yelping, or screaming. This definition shall not apply to dogs in a kennel or boarding facility which has received a zoning permit under the city's zoning regulations, or working farm dogs that are barking in order to herd or protect livestock or poultry, or to protect crops. This also, nuisance dogs also mean anyone that causes damage to property."
Any comments?
I did hear from some of the neighbors that had talked from Elm Street, and they couldn't be here tonight, but they wanted to say they really were in favor of this ordinance and hope that it passes.
Great. Any other comments?
Yeah, no, I'd support this. I had a few emails on it, and I think what I've been telling constituents is, I don't see this as being draconian or any more strict than the pre-existing language. I think it's just a matter of clarity and realigning, as Cameron says, with some of the other cities. So, I have no problem with this.
Jack, did you have something? And then we'll go on.
I favor this. I think this is a good idea. I, as it happened, I circulated the video of the first meeting in which we discussed this to everybody in my family because that was the night we also had the presentation on the Emerald Ash Bore. And every time I talk to my sister, who lives in New Jersey since then, she says, "Did those poor people ever get help with their, with the problem with the dogs?" So, I'm certainly going to be supporting this.
Laura?
I just, I didn't really hear the background from November as to why this is on the table now. Donna?
We received some complaints from some neighbors, and when they went to try to enforce a chronic barking, howling, dog, the police found this discrepancy between what is said about a dog nuisance under the dog ordinances and what we said about dogs in the noise ordinance. So, we were just trying to make them mirror one another.
I see. I guess my concern is that it could open up neighbors, holding other neighbors accountable in a way that could just be really bad. Like, the neighbor across the streets, cat runs across the yard, and that makes the other neighbor's dog bark, but the people who own the cat call the police, that kind of thing. I just, the difference for me with a dog versus, you know, people playing their music too loud or things like that, is that a dog often vocalizes maybe when they're happy, or they're tangled, or, you know, a dog is off, you know, on their property, or something like that. When you just say "frequent" or "continued," there's no, you know, it's like saying like, okay, well, this dog is loud. It's like saying, well, the neighbors downstairs have kids, and I don't want to hear them. I mean, dogs should be allowed to vocalize somewhat, and I'm just afraid this could be too strict. And some of the research was like Cambridge, Massachusetts. I looked at the packet for the research. But some of it was really urban with much larger populations, higher density than what we experience in a town of only, you know, 8,000 people. So, maybe you could speak to that.
I don't have my packet in front of me, but my research tried to be regional, other cities. There are some comparable benchmark communities in there as well, and I use the Vermont League of Cities and Towns recommendation as well.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, so, since you're still here.
Could anybody speak to the, you know, neighbor versus neighbor and how the police are going to deal with this?
We have any number of.
Maybe, how is it going to affect the police?
Sure. I, you know, I think, I'll let the police the answer to this, but we, you know, we have a lot of situations where there's neighbor disputes. And certainly, if a dog is a one-off barking because they're tangled or something, they're not going to get cited under the ordinance. I mean, this is really intended to be, you know, night after night after night type thing, which is what the neighbors were experiencing, but they weren't actually barking for 20 minutes straight. So, that was the conflict with the ordinance.
I guess my concern is, we were talking about, like, preserving kind of the intent of the law when it was written, and this really doesn't do it. I mean, the intent was really that it was going on and on, and now there's no allowance for that.
It does say "frequent" and "continued."
It says "chronically."
It says "or."
"Chronically disturbing by frequent and continued barking."
It says "or."
I do want to also point out that the penalties for a lot of this is restorative process with our Community Justice Center. So, we do ask people, other than just fining people, you can get a fine, or you can go through a restorative process where our Community Justice Center really sits down with neighbors and tries to get to the core of the dispute. Because I think you're drawing a point of, a lot of times, if disputes get to this level, it's because of something other than a dog, right? Sometimes. And so, sometimes this, we really try to help people sit down and talk about it, and so that it doesn't get to this level.
Or result in a call to the police department.
Right, so we don't involve them.
Who has other business to handle.
So, we try, I think we try to address that in this ordinance as well.
Thank you, Cameron.
Donna?
In fact, that's a great point, because that's what the neighbors tried to do, but they had no muscle to make the people come to the Justice Center and sit down for mediation. And so, this gets that step in place, so people talk.
Okay. But you're right, it is "or." Okay. All right, any further comments?
Now, you close the public hearing.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. And, yeah, Donna.
Make a motion for the second hearing on the dog ordinance changes to be the next meeting, which is January 23rd?
Yes.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that is all of our regular business for this evening. So, now we're going to go to council reports. Donna, I'm just so used to starting with you. Is that okay?
Okay. Well, I had a lot of Regional Planning Commission meetings, and the Clean Basin made a petition to the regional, the Clean Basin Plan is a subcommittee out of the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission. And the report was done, and the basin plan was approved the very first of 2019, but the committee felt it was some concerns not addressed. And so, indeed, we're doing this letter. And I realize, I've been on the Clean Water Basin Plan really more as a citizen. So, if indeed, I shouldn't use my title, Montpelier City Council, I'd like to know that before we send this letter. So, I may as well put that on the agenda. I was doing this report and realized, oh, we are sending this letter. They are putting our, sort of our associated groups. And so, maybe I shouldn't be saying I'm from Montpelier City Council.
What's your timeline on sending that letter?
Oh, it's not till next month. So, we can talk about it next meeting evening, but I thought I'd put it out there, and I can send you a copy of the letter.
That'd be great.
And give you more about it. But it's just saying, we'd like these concerns that were missing in the final plan. The other thing is, Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission had a multimodal group. Now, I got into this group late, and I was really concerned that it's doing its thing, and we had this microtransit group, and then you had this wonderful meeting of a lot of regional transportation. So, we are trying to get, what's one of the things they're trying to do is pull all these groups together and look beyond Montpelier and to help communities that can't think of putting transit on the bus, but could do some of the other ideas. So, I would like to join this group, too. But, you know, you could decide whether I'm there on your behalf. I can just keep you posted. They're trying to create a new name for itself, but it'll be meeting and trying to destroy silos, basically, on transportation. So, keep tuned.
Had a good meeting yesterday with the Vermont River Conservancy. They had some questions. It actually scared the hell out of me, the prospect of taking out some of the three dams there, you know, and killing us all in Montpelier. So, I had a lot of questions. the three dams there, you know, and killing us all in Montpelier. So I had a lot of questions and they were able to really give me the 101, sort of Fisher Price rundown of it. You know, and just really looking at what these dams were initially intended for, whether it be hydropower or flood mitigation. The three ones, they're talking about the Pioneer Dam, the Bailey Dam, and the Rat Dam over there, really haven't been maintained. They're not really serving any functional purpose anymore. And actually, they could be a real liability for us if one of them pops there. So I, I think in the next coming couple meetings, they might be asking us for a letter of support to pull down some DEC funding, to actually do a feasibility study of these dams and see, do we do nothing? Do we take them out? Is it something in between? But I think there's enormous potential, just looking at Confluence Park and sort of the river axis we have over by Bar Hill now, to put in some kayaking, other recreational activities, in addition to, I guess if you, you know, take out some of these dams, like some of the fish population jumps up, some of these wildlife habitats are restored. And if you're not going in a straight line, you can really sort of slow down the flow of the river naturally by letting a river be a river. So anyways, if anybody wants to sit down with them, I'm sure Ricardo and Steve would be more than happy to. But it was a real eye-opener for me. And I'd be happy to introduce that letter of support in a couple meetings there. That's it for now. Thanks.
Yeah, keep us posted on that.
Did, did you say the Rat Dam?
The Rat Dam.
The Rat Dam. I think it was initially intended to cover a big sewage pipe back in the day there. But now that we have a wastewater treatment plant, that's not the case anymore. So we don't hide all the W secrets.
It's on the north branch. It's, you can see it from the new pedestrian bridge. Or, actually, you might not be able, it might be directly over it, or it's just barely upstream of it. I'm not sure. It's right there, though.
I'm looking forward to Martin Luther King Day weekend coming up. It's a significant holiday for my family. I kind of use that as the, the chance to go down and visit my folks because it's hard to get away at Christmas. So just wanted to mention that and use it to make my excuse to Bill. Not going to see you next week, I suppose.
It'll be closed.
It'll be closed anyway. I will be at Baguio's tomorrow morning, of course, 8:30 to 9:30. I also want to mention, Ken Russell referenced it briefly, there was a vigil and a rally at the State House today that I got to see just a little bit of around homelessness statewide and possible solutions for it. It was, as these things are affecting, depressing and invigorating kind of all at once. And I was glad I was there. I was sorry I couldn't be there for the whole thing. And I feel like there was something else, but I can't remember it now, so I'll pass.
I'll pass.
Just one quick update from the Social and Economic Justice Advisory Committee, that there continues to be progress on fleshing out and refining and request for a proposal for that. So thank you all again for the allocation and the budget. And shout out to Cameron, who's been working really hard and doing some great work pulling that together. So thank you to Cameron for that. And look forward to sharing you, with you when we get to a final version of that.
Okay, so I have a couple of things here. So one is, I'm going to be hosting some office hours right next door here in the, in City Hall, Tuesday, 21st, 3:30 to 4:30. I'm going to try to make that regular. I know I've said that in the past, but I'm going to be there next Tuesday. That is going to happen. So that, at least that's, that is my plan. So I'll be there next Tuesday, 21st, 3:30, 4:30, taking a cue from Glenn here. It's good, it's a good practice. Just a reminder to the council, if you would please remind, or please remember to fill out Bill's evaluation form. I think we have that review coming up. I forget what day we said it would be on, but I think before this meeting, I was the only one who'd yet filled it out. So please...
Can you give us a deadline?
Yeah, yeah. I'll, I'll send an email of a deadline. Look at when it makes sense to...
Didn't you say the 12th you wanted to do it by 12? So we needed it before then.
The 12th?
What are you going to do at the meeting of the 12th?
That's when we were going to do the review. So it should probably be done by the Friday before.
At least.
At least.
But one of the problems with it, you have to fill it all out at once. Because I started it and realized I couldn't save it. So I'm doing it offline.
Okay. Yep, fair enough. Thank you. It is, it's a long form.
Awesome.
Yeah. Okay, so that is second thing. And then just a third thing, just a heads up about the Energy Efficiency Home Energy Labeling Ordinance coming up. We were aiming to have the language done by the 12th for the 12th, to have some preliminary information or potentially even like a first reading potentially on that date. And so we'll have the language available potentially before that. So if anyone would like to see it for that, we're going to finalize that language probably in the next week or so. So yeah, it's exciting to see that moving forward, or getting to be at least clearer, which is great. All right, that's it for me. John?
Just a reminder that if you have ballot questions, to get them to me by 5 o'clock next Thursday. That is not the candidate filing deadline. The candidate filing deadline is 5 o'clock the following Monday. So we will need to set a Board of Civil Authority meeting for that day to draw lots. Will not have to be a formal action, so we won't need a, a quorum. Also, I just received notification today that the non-citizen voting charter change proposal was actually released by Senate Rules Committee, and GovOps is going to take it up next Tuesday at 3:15.
The Senate GovOps?
I'm sorry, Senate GovOps is going to take it up, yeah.
Okay, wow. Sorry, what time was that again?
It said 3:15, Tuesday.
The 21st?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, I have office hours. Going to the office hours. Oh, gosh. Well, it's, yeah, exactly. Let's...
Well, I will be tested.
Someone's, you're going to go?
I'll go.
You're going to be able to go? And John, you're going to go?
Yeah, I'm, I'm on the list to test. If I, I would just remind folks that the way it went last year was that Senate GovOps assumed, as per normal procedure, that they were going to get this last, the last session. So they preemptively held hearings for it. So that's when we called out everybody, you know, we, attorneys we'd spoken to, the city clerks in other, you know, cities in the country who had done this. So the committee has heard a lot of that already. I'll, I'll try to gently remind them, but this is a smaller list that they've set up. And I'm not inclined to necessarily go and shake the bushes and the trees, given that.
Want to warm them up?
Is that it for you?
Yeah, that's it. I'm done.
Great. Bill?
No, we've been, you know, knee-deep with all sorts of things. I don't have anything specific new, other than in addition to the candidate filing, remind people that the deadline, if you wish to be considered for appointment for the interim position, is this Friday. At the end of the day, we, to my knowledge, we have two people that have submitted applicants so far. There may be more, but I, I am sure of two. So that will be on the agenda. I don't know if we want to talk about early start to get that done before we do everything else next week.
Where's our board, so we can look at what's on?
I'm trying to think of like, how busy the 23rd's agenda is.
So we have, well, finalizing the budget and the warning, because we don't have, well, make a decision perhaps about the, the land repayment. We were going to have a presentation on the wastewater plant, the Phase 2, dog ordinance, second reading.
Budget, second hearing.
Budget, second hearing. Trying to think what else was on that list. I mean, it's not, nothing.
Yeah, why don't we do it at 6?
Are, are people available to be here at 6 o'clock?
I wonder if we should make the appointment at 6 o'clock? And because some of these things are public hearings, people might not expect to, I don't know how fast that conversation will be. And so if it is...
Well, yeah, I meant to start to do the appointment the very first thing.
Right, exactly. If we did the appointment first at 6, but then not start other business until at least 6:30.
Correct. And I was basing this on at least prior times when the applicants have come in and made a presentation. Sometimes people have spoken on their behalf. Council's gone into executive session. Sometimes it takes longer than others. So I'm thinking it's going to be at least a half an hour before we get into the regular business. So, but then again, it could take five minutes for all of them, so.
So I'm, I'm okay with that? How do you all feel?
Well, I feel if we allow just that much time, and we need more, we can move it, we can extend it to, to another part of the meeting if we have to.
You, you can, although I think, well, it's your call. I think the intent was to appoint the person at the beginning.
I understand. I'm just saying if we got, suddenly end up with four people, it might be more complicated, that's all, that we could extend it.
Yeah, I, I might be a minute or two late for a 6 o'clock meeting, but I'll make it as soon as I can. Wouldn't be more than, you know, 6:05, you can start without me.
Any thoughts?
And we'll let, we'll let the applicants know as well.
So do you, do you need a motion to that effect?
We'd never, we're just setting the meeting.
We're setting, okay. And I think it would probably be important to not take up any other business prior to 6:30, so that...
Right.
Anybody who, you know, shows up for these other items is not...
Except approving the agenda.
What's that?
Except approving the agenda.
Sure. None of the substantial...
Yeah, yeah, no, I got you.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. In fact, to that end, we might want to put the consent agenda after.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Other business, all of that.
Right, so, okay, and is that it for you?
That was it for me.
Okay. All right, so that's, that's everything. So without objection, we will adjourn, 8:38.